Okay, are you guys ready?
Hey, good evening. Thanks for being punctual, certainly appreciate that. Sorry to keep you late there. So, you are sharing your half hour with Boys and Girls Club of Harrisburg. So you have approximately fifteen minutes for your presentation. I said it's only twelve, so if that goes off. We need to wrap things up before it gets out. This is also being livestreamed on the county's, or on this office's YouTube channel. So, just to let you know. Please identify yourself for the public record. And whenever you're ready, the floor is yours.
My name is Anthony Pierce. I'm the founder, owner of Axons and Change Foundation. Where I went outside the box five years ago and built a mobile barbershop bus. Nonprofit where I do low-income housing areas, homeless encampments and homeless events. That I've been doing for the last five years. My proposal is that I'm gonna put in for a food truck. And turn that into a soup kitchen. Nonprofit soup kitchen, that plus all the blessing. For all the events through the city and county commissioners. Plus doing what we're able to do with homeless events on feeding them. In the low-income areas. A lot of the times that I've been doing this for five years. I have seen a lot of the people of ministries come out in the back of their vehicles. And serve food. A lot of them just getting bags of food. And drinks and keeping it going. Now, the food truck that I would like to do, because I know back in sometime century. There used to be soup kitchens in different communities. Where they serve hot meals for ones that need a hot meal for the homeless. You know what I mean, twice a day. I haven't seen that since over ten years. I would like to bring that to the city and the communities. Be able to give them hot meals without no charge. Even doing events without no charge. A lot of city events, a lot of county commissioner events. When they do events, they have outside vendors coming in. Or vendors that's in there, but they charge. I wanna be different and outside of the box and don't do that long as I get food supply. To be able to do it for the city and community. That represents the city and community. Don't give them back. My invoice that I have already in there is for the food truck. Which is costing seventy-three thousand and some change. And the extra, that's why I'm asking for seventy-five thousand dollars to be awarded. For me helping get this food truck. The rest and change will be for silverware and pots and pans. Food donations will come from giants, Wise Market and the Food Bank. So I would never have the issue of getting food, to be able to disperse food. You know what I mean? On the city and county events, that's when I have to sit down with the county commissioner. Or the mayor at that time or point. To ask if they can purchase the food. So they can be able to share and all food, food is free. For all the events they hold. I just wanna change something different for the city and community. Harrisburg is, I'm coming with a lot of more events. Just like New Covenant, I mean they have multiple events over New Covenant. I just wanna do something different for the city and county. And since the city is my co-advocate and sponsor. And Hollywood Casino will be a sponsor. Their logos will be all over the food truck. Also have the advertisement and all that, since it's a nonprofit food truck.
So you have those as separate or direct sponsorship from the casino?
No, if I get awarded.
So the funds that are awarded for this program are from all the county commissioners. A lot of casino is where the money originates from. The county receives it because the law says they're being received. The statute says that when somebody puts money in a slot machine, a portion of it comes back to the county. So the money from this program is all the amount of money?
No, generally.
Essentially, I mean I guess you could do it the other way, but...
Would they be separating if it wasn't?
Right. Yeah, would the casino be providing?
The way I view it is, since Hollywood Casino is giving money to the county.
It's required by law.
By law, so I know.
To do the business here.
So Mr. Pierce, the only thing I know about food, other than what we do too much in places. Is that there's a lot to know about food preparation guidelines. Do you know all that?
I've been, the same, it goes to understand situations as being a barber. You have to get inspected. So that's the main thing that with the food truck today's purchase, it will be inspected. A advocate like me or my wife will have a vendor's license to be able to operate it. For health reasons, so. And then today, that's will be, and you register for the city of Harrisburg as a vendor.
Can I maybe got any political credentials or certifications?
Yes. Yes, it's nothing, it's just getting, it's like when you open a barber shop. They have to come in and inspect it. And it takes them fifteen minutes to inspect it. The food truck that I own is gonna be brand new. It's gonna be fully equipped, already wrapped and everything else. So everything will be in there, equipment-wise besides silverware and pots and pans. So it'll be fully equipped for everything that needs to be done to serve a hot meal.
So how do you, how do you know you're feeding the homeless as opposed to anybody else just walking out?
At the end of the day, I won't care if anybody walks up or not. It'll be being, doing good cause and feeding somebody. Doing the blessings, and since I've been doing this for five years with my mobile barbershop bus. There's certain locations that I already know that I already set up with my barber shop bus. Where I would do the same thing with the food truck. But this time, instead of doing it twice a month with my barber bus. I'll be doing it three times a week with this food truck.
As well as twice a month with the barber truck?
Yes, that's me totally different. Yeah, because when I do it twice a month, doing it three times a week. Because I do that events twice a month for the homeless. And it's usually at the beginning. It'd be the first Saturday and second Sunday, you know, each month. So each time, now I work with a ministry, Starfish Ministry. Where they be feeding, maybe outside feeding. So that'd be a better assistance from them helping me, everything's there. You know, and we see like, we see like two, three hundred people at sometimes just at one spot.
And I thought it was here. Yes. Oh my gosh.
Yes.
Some of these people know you, like they...
They, yes. They know me out through the community because there's no other barber shop. Or mobile barber shop that provides free haircuts, ones in need. Even at events, especially with the homeless, you know what I mean? Low-income neighborhoods and stuff, because a lot of them can't afford it. You know, they got their kids and sometimes be, I don't know, poor. Sometimes these baby moms are worrying about more about themselves than their kids. You know what I mean? And this is the reason why these kids, older kids are doing what they're doing. On not respecting the elders and the disrespect and choosing other bad ways in society. Because their parents choose not to be there. They give them parental love and be attentive.
For leading out themselves.
Yes, but at the end of the day, still no excuse. You know, the parent is a parent, doesn't matter old or, there's a different responsibility now. And another month that you have to take care of, send yourself, hope soon as so.
So obviously you're doing this with your bar truck, to some extent, right?
At some events, yes, I will be doing it at a...
How, how does this, though it's not a business, how do I see this sustaining itself? If you're getting free food, not charging a thing, and you have, you know, expenses. I mean obviously the truck, you know, key inspections, fires, gas, oil, all that sort of stuff. Where does that part come from? How does, how does that sustain itself?
Cause I work, I work, mostly it comes that I work and me being a construction worker. And also we work in barber shop. Most of that funds go to wherever maintenance is, my buses are doing. That means insurance, registration, and upkeep and all of that, inspections and all of that. I choose to do this because I know what path I was when I was younger. And speaking my language, when I came home fifteen years ago, I seen how my city was. And how bad it got with the homeless and the kids being homeless and all of that. I just don't bless them, I bless myself by giving back. By giving them knowledge, by giving them wisdom. Going down the right pathway where they won't make mistakes that I had made in my past. Me being a life coach and also being a mentor has changed multiple kids' life from two thousand eleven until now. So I would like to keep on being a mentor and a life coach, not just for the children. But for the ducks, because some ducks need to get their eyes open back again. Sometimes they lose track and lost their selves and their pride and their confidence. On how to, with both feet back down and do what they need to do to prove to their self they're someone.
So may I say one thing, I know this isn't it, but as far as food loads and stuff. Like most of the time he's coming out of his pockets or mine to supply, you know, some of the kids that called and be like, boy the parents. We have no food, we have, we don't have this. So most of the time we're coming out of our pocket, we don't ask for a dollar, we don't get a dollar. Now, if they wanna donate, that's fine. But this is often that we do, even when I get off work sometimes, we have to run and we run to put things aside and we run for the...
So when you place an order to get a food truck, how long is the time?
Soon as the order is put in, without getting awarded, the money you gotta ask for. It'll be me and the county commissioners, objective to, yeah, Luca, we will be working together on getting that. They already have where the places where it's gonna be built at, the time lapse and everything that's gonna be in. And they, we must have had to put down the money, the monies go straight to them. So my money will be able to touch my hands, besides with getting the pots and pans and silverware. But that money will be going straight to the food truck, through the county commissioners. And most likely in six months or less.
Have you already started playing the groundwork for getting the food?
Yes.
Thanks. Any other questions?
No.
Thank you much.
Thank you very much. You all have a good new year.
Happy new year.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity.
There's a guy at Lancer Fund that let him open a barber school. That was, yeah, I was saying, that was him.
Yeah, the ministry government guy.
I think he had the school open, I'm trying to explain it. Get another chair. Another place. Didn't do what he was doing as hard for the shop. Oh, you know, I know, ultimate occasion. Yeah. Hello. Ah, that was me. Catch him up. Those are girls. Hey, good evening, thanks for coming out.
Thank you guys for having us.
So. You have approximately fifteen minutes for your presentation. I'm gonna set it to over just for twelve minutes, so if you hear that go off, we need to wrap things up. So if you have time for their presentation as well. This is also being livestreamed on the YouTube channel. That's you can get to via this organization's website, if you would just watch yourself. That's your convenience, but whenever you're ready. The floor is yours, oh, please identify yourself for the public audience.
Good afternoon, my name is Mark Balk, I'm Executive Director for Boys and Girls Club of Harrisburg. Boys and Girls Club of Harrisburg, if somebody you may know. We service children ages six to eighteen throughout the Harrisburg community. We have two locations located, one on Houseville, twelve, excuse me, twelve twenty-seven Berryhill Street. And then we have a double location located in the south, part of Harrisburg, adjacent from Hall Manor. To the seventeen, other, seventeen hundred Hamlet Street. Today our presentation is regarding our ask and safety improvements and infrastructure improvements. We have submitted our application with all the county. There are, just so I know, there were three questions that were sent out. If you want those answered, maybe up front.
Whatever you wanna leave, the list is up to you.
And you could email them to me, that way I have them for your file.
We will do that, yeah.
But you would wanna answer them during your public hearing now.
I'll start with those questions. Obviously the infrastructure grant is to improve the safety of our, our children that we serve. And young people within the community. We service about two hundred kids daily from both sites throughout those locations. And the one seven one oh four is the closing weeks, actually serve both locations. And actually happens in one of the highest rates, has one of the highest rates of prime in our area. And we want to be on top of those things in terms of just providing a safe place for our children. And what we've done is partnered with, along with our Harrisburg Police Department. Provide a safety improvement plan by doing a vulnerability study, Harrisburg City Police Department. Special task force coming, came to both of our locations and assessed not only the interior locations. But more importantly, they told me the outside perimeter structures. To kind of summarize their, their assessments is that both of our facilities. They would like to see a stronger perimeter security infrastructure. Those security infrastructures being fencing, up-to-date lighting. In addition, in addition to access, remote access. Those are some of the larger highlighted items. And they were looking at both of our sites.
Who was that?
Harrisburg Police Department, yeah, that is, that was none other than Harrisburg Police Department. They, we have a signed letter of commissioner supporting the project based on the results of their department. The what's called vulnerability study. Question number one, are these funding source, are these funds, resources that have we sought to support our project? Please identify the resources that we sought to receive additional funding. I can announce today, we've also, with one of the, on the organization of the county. We've also applied for the FEMA nonprofit security grant. And we, the similar proposal that we submitted to the county. We submitted to the FEMA nonprofit security grant. And we were notified in October that we would be awarded. We don't know what that award is as of today. But we do know that we have been selected, I think, out of three agencies within the county. Based on our needs that we would be selected to receive that nonprofit security grant. The grant is written in the same format. Because although our request from the county is seventy-five thousand. The overall magnitude of the project is probably three times, four times that. So we're, we're hopeful that along with the FEMA grant and the county grant. That will probably reach us to about at least eighty-nine percent of what our goal is to develop greater infrastructure.
FEMA's the federal?
FEMA's the federal.
When do you think you'll done with the amount that you will receive? Or do you know a dispersion rate for that?
So the grant was a minimum, I believe it was a minimum of about hundred sixty thousand. But we do not know what, what our goal is actually. And I believe it will be notified in the next six to eight months.
So would you use that word river?
We, we've kind of taken a look at the, what they've considered to be the high point items. The, the perimeter, what they call fortress perimeter infrastructure is, is one of the highest items. You have prior on this.
Yes.
So that is, the Berryhill location actually sits on three, three point five acres of land. Only half of that is fenced. So there is access to the south and there's access to the north of the property, which is undefenced. It is actually wooded and which actually from the, from the vulnerability study. That actually presents a higher target by being built. So, looking at that, that, that plan, it's definitely one of the other things is some shrub removal. And then also perimeter fencing that will go along each of the locations. So number two is, if the question funds are not received in full amount, how will the project proceed? Well, as I demonstrated that FEMA, we, we have been ordered to be part of the FEMA. So we, we know that we have a good start with that, with that grant. But we will, we will be looking further on if, you know, if things do not match up in terms of total budget. There are no licenses required for what we're doing. We currently actually have security cameras and things like that in place at the one. So we actually have in both facilities. One we will upgrade, which is South Harrisburg, Hamlet Street location. But we, we plan to, we will not be using any subscriptions or licenses along with this plan. In, in terms of preservation of jobs, we're looking at, we are looking at local contractors to do the work. They are the ones who provide us bidding. So we, we're hopeful that not only will they be contractors from our community. They will be contractors who are actually from the county area as well. Questions?
Yes, so keeping into what sort of that other theory, right? If you were to prioritize your request, it would be your entry doors, the twenty thousand nine hundred thirty-six?
It would be entry doors and fencing. So one of the things that's, that's easy accessible is the access to our fencing. We, we have several vehicles, we have, we pick up students every day from the school districts. We have a couple vans and actually a bus that we utilize. And that fence is always open during that, during operations. We are looking at a fence system that actually closed behind each vehicle. So it appears a perimeter.
I'm gonna save for my flip notes, I have them in front of me, I'm sorry, but I don't see anything about fencing, I'm only looking at doors.
Okay, so that might be a few.
I think that's all.
Yeah, that must be many. So yes, our doors, one of the things that they're looking at in terms of access to doors. Creating a barrier and shattered glass door systems. Along with audible and visual alarm for, for our, for our door systems. So I also know that our lighting system is dated around the perimeter. As I said, both, both facilities have, do not have up-to-date now LED lighting systems. And lots of that is motivated, like to provide more safety. Our parents have asked, you know, that we actually, we staff with all members outside because of the low lighting system.
It's cool, it's coming.
Yeah, it's even in the spring. Yeah, when it gets dark at, you know, four forty-five in the day, you know, it's our hours of operation until eight, eight P M typically. Sometimes we can have later hours, but you know, you're looking at, you know, four hours of, you know, pretty much darkest in our area. And one side is completely wooded at Berryhill. So that, that's definitely something that we're considering being a part of our priorities.
Any other questions? Thank you much.
Thank you.
Yes, believe me, you guys are not a stranger. But you have approximately fifteen minutes for your presentation this evening. This is also being livestreamed on the YouTube channel. That can be, acquire that link through this doors website. Please identify yourselves from a color record as well. I'm going to set a timer for 12 minutes and once that goes off, then we need to wrap things up. Because the other applicants could be there, bear shape as well. So whenever you're ready, go ahead.
I'm Jennifer Ross, I'm the manager of strategy and I have to get home in the second half of the year.
I'm Barry Ramford, I'm the president of St. Hill, going to leave the home left at home.
I'm Kelly English, I'm the director of maintenance, emergency readiness, and security.
Troy Beaver, director of development.
And I'm Ed Savage, assistant director of development.
Okay, let me begin with the first, first slide representation. I'm going to very quickly give the most important part of our history. We've been at the location, we are out on North Sixth Street since 1867. For the last 158 years, we've provided service to not only City Harrisburg, Doff County residents. And in that, the most recent accolade, we are one of, under 20% of the facilities in the United States that recently had that accolade where we were determined to be at the highest level of quality by U.S. News and World Report. We are the only facility, skilled nursing facility in Doff County to affirm that level. And in that, the mission that we have to provide highest level quality of life and quality of care to residents who entrusted their lives to us encompasses the heart of our presentation, our request, which we're very appreciative of this opportunity to have this moment be in consideration, directly associated to emergency preparedness and security. We're building on what we previously began. And in that, I'm going to turn it over to Kelly to give details. And we'll also begin to answer any questions you may have.
And I'd like to add, with that acknowledgement, that would not have been possible without the support of this board and previous projects that we have done to enhance our first preparedness. So we thank all of you for your, your support and hopefully your continued support. I'm going to briefly go through this to allow time for some questions for the ask this year. We do have a PowerPoint. So for this year, what we're requesting are funds to expand our controlled access points. This was our keyless entry system access control that was previously funded by the board in a previous year. That is, that is simply just an expansion of that so we can continue to cover more of our egress points and our sensitive areas, contain medications, that type of things. The second ask are for the wireless access points. What wireless access points do for us and how that affects our nurse preparedness is that as we, like everybody else that is coming into further enhanced technology, our phone system that we're upon the heels here of getting installed, that is an internet-driven phone system like most are now, a VoIP type phone. That is, those are items that are used to create a, a wireless signal within inside our facility. That is directly tied to our residents, clients, their ability to access internet's resources. Also, our phone, our, our basic phone system. And also our not any, and just as equally as important, I would say, our records management, which really, when you look at that from a nurse preparedness standpoint, it is very important all the time for our nurses to understand where people are at health-wise. That is not possible without having a, a signal within our facility. So it's something we have to be mindful of. Thirdly, our emergency mobile communications request. What that basically boils down to is a device called trunk case. And in the event of a loss of cellular service, phone line go down, or a loss of internet, this device has the ability to generate its own, its own wireless signal as well as create its own cellular scene. It has the ability to reach out over 40 miles to connect to towers that otherwise, if we have a disaster in our area, we wouldn't be able to access. It can reach past that and provide up to 100 users within our facility to continue our continuity of communications with our residents, our, our pandemic members of the residents, and also nursing services. In the event of a disaster in our area, nursing services may very well be taxed. We might not have the same level of caregivers in the community around, not being able to, to, to make a phone call out of the facility to get that help could definitely be a problem. This would kind of fill that back up, so to speak. Kind of piggybacking on that, we are regulated by CMS, federal regulations, minimum regulations that nursing homes fall under name. 2017 APS, a rule commonly known as emergency preparedness rule, that puts the onus on the nursing home, skilled nursing home facility to provide, even in the event of disaster, effective communication for residents' families and emergency services. So this is, this item here would definitely strengthen, create better resilience so that we can be a little bit further self-contained to be able to take care of our, our people that have entrusted their lives to us. Next slide. Brief information about the controlled access points, I'm not going to, going to get too far in the weeds. Again, this was a project that the board had already previously given us funding for. We're just asking for the ability to cover more of our areas. Chuck, can you go through to the wireless access points request? To the point of the wireless, again, the wireless access points. Again, those are at the, for our facility, they are at the end of life. They are, we are going to be required to replace those. In order to provide service within our facilities, they identify that we need 37 of those items. With your sponsorship of that program, that will ensure that we are able to continue to provide cost-free internet service and phone service to our residents without having to charge them for that, that service.
What do you deem it, that you would want to charge them for that service?
I'm sorry.
Why would you not want to charge them for that service?
I can, let me maybe quickly address that. Of the residents of our facility, we, on an annual basis, first, for our personal care and skilled nursing, we have never asked someone to leave because they've run out of money. We have endowments going back 100 years. We are at a point now where the challenge economically, based on the environment we're in and the healthcare system being challenged, we can't do as others do and go out and just continually upcharge and things that we are using, purchasing services and goods. The cost of them goes up because we're reliant on third-party insurance, medical assistance, and Medicare. We are essentially locked in to the rates that they prescribe. And there's one thing that has not been done, and that understandably for all of us is, in order to raise the levels to equal what residents would need to be paying, it would require a tax increase because there isn't enough money available to pay the Medicare and medical assistance system. So the rates have been suppressed for approximately 10 years to be able to not have what actually the cost of care is. On an annual basis, in the past year, the financials through 6/30 and 24th, we, Homeland paid $4 million to maintain the mission of the highest level of quality of care, quality of life for our residents. 54% of our skilled residents are medical assistants. We can't charge them. So what ended up ultimately happening, the charge will fall back on those who are able to pay privately. And it will not be just the charge spread across all involved. It will be much higher than that because you can't charge a medical assistance or a Medicare recipient when you're, when they're associated to those programs.
And just to clarify, we do charge a nominal fee per phone, but we cannot give that for a permanent service. But the reason I suggest that might be a consideration is we're seeing much higher demand. It used to be occasionally with a tablet at the top. Now people have smartphones, they have smart TVs, streaming networks and things like that. So that was a consideration for that.
At this point, that's sort of a very broad look at the three items that, that we're, we're, we put in our ask for this year. As you will see, I'm not sure if you have a copy, can you get it again to the, the numbers? I don't know if you have a copy of the actuals out over here. Homeland has put a bit of, with our proposal, we have put a bit of sting in it. Our, our portion of what we would be looking to, to put out to fulfill all three of these is approximately 141,000 and change. The ask is 74,208,000. At this point, I would like to open it up with any questions that you may have with us.
This was such a thorough presentation, I don't have questions.
I've already asked my question, so.
So I've asked questions before, but. The portion that's proposed to be funded by the shared grant is all of that has to be purchased and installed at the same time. We are doing it in a year, based, even if it's over a short period of time. The only portion that is time-sensitive is the wireless access please due to the end of the decade for COVID in February 2026. The rest of it, you can space out. Did I have a question? The end of life, that means they're faulty or because other things don't support? Meraki will no longer, Meraki will make it so they no longer work.
Everything has a license and when the license runs out, you still have the hardware, but it doesn't actually work. So that's, that's, so it becomes basically useless then.
They don't provide the updates or the support or anything like that, so. So they're working? Well, no, they're working right now, but come February 8th of 2026, they will no longer properly.
Meraki will stop supporting them. And I'll allow you to logically progress because we are in a world where even though something works and functions perfectly fine, the determination of the useful life now stops it from functioning because the entity that is providing it is no longer going to support it. So you have to make a decision, move in a direction.
One other thing worth noting is when we saw the replacement costs for the Meraki equipment was, because that was going to be close to $48,000, we pushed back and said, what other options do we have? And Intermittent IT, which provides our technology support, identified the HP Aruba's. We have been listed as a little under $12,000, the price has bumped up since we submitted it, of course, but it's still considerably less than the Meraki.
How long do they last?
It's a five-year license for them. And then it may even last, you know, I think this wheel of license, we probably can use it past that time. Yeah, totally.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the answer, the opportunity.
Should I just leave this here or?
Yeah, you can just leave that there.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone. Happy New Year.
Yeah, Elvis's birthday, after Elvis's birthday.
Nope, just me. So welcome this evening. I think you are invited approximately 15 minutes for your presentation. Keep us focused, set a timer for say 12 minutes, it goes off, we can wrap things up. As well, this is being livestreamed, so smile, keep your camera, so to speak. It's on YouTube and you can access it through the Doff County County, the National Health Ministry website. Okay. Please identify yourself.
Sure, my name is Reverend Matthew Best. I'm the pastor of Christ Lutheran Church and the executive director of Christ Lutheran Health Ministries, which is in Allison Hill on 13th Street. And we have, we're an interesting congregation that we host three free health clinics. So there's been a notable outreach clinic, which has been there for 25 years. It's a partnership with Penn State Health. We also have a dental clinic, which is what my application was pertaining to. The dental clinic has been in existence since 2014. And that is run primarily through dentists who are volunteering their time, as well as we have a few dental assistants who are on the church payroll, typically in order to provide the care that are needed. And then the third clinic is called Healthy on the Hill, which is run by a licensed nurse practitioner who's volunteering her time. And that just started, it's been a year actually since, since that started. So I always like to say since 2018, we've had over 100,000 visits because of the health clinics. Certainly helped a lot of folks. The dental clinic is currently open three days a month on either a Friday or a Saturday. And we are able to help about 30 patients a month. And it's a completely free clinic. We do not do any type of intake. It's all the questions are about health-related issues. That is on purpose. We don't ask questions about, about folks' demographics or those type of things. They trust us because their information is not going to get lost, they're still. The, the story I like to tell about the, the dental clinic really is, there was a gentleman named Tomas, came to this country and that's to give you a sense of the type of folks that we're, we're helping out. They're really the folks who are at the, they have fallen through all of the rest of the, the healthcare system. They end up at us. Tomas was working as a line cook. He had gotten a job, came to this country, gotten a job, was taking care of himself. Then of course he did not provide any type of dental insurance. And he started having some dental pain. And our, our dental clinic is primarily about dental pain. It's not a dental hygiene clinic. He tried connecting with different dentists, couldn't get anywhere because he didn't have insurance. One dentist was finally willing to help him out, it was going to cost him $300 and they were not going to use no account. So of course he said no, and things got worse, and to the point that he could not work. And his whole life was really going to start spiraling out of control. Got connected with a community health worker and they brought him to Christ Lutheran Church, the dental clinic. And they were able to do the procedure that he needed to have happen. Within two days, he was back to work. Literally saved his life in a variety of different ways. That's the type of folks that we are working with. People oftentimes who are working, they just, they don't have access to dental, dental insurance or they're, or there's a variety of different reasons why they're coming to our door. We have been referred from places like Hamilton Health, who has a whole lot of chairs, but they don't have enough dentists. So they'll refer to, to us as well. When people come to the dental clinic, they're primarily getting either an extr, everyone gets an exam. They get either, typically what happens is they're either going to have an extraction or a filling. Occasionally we will do root canals as well, depends on who the dentist is and if they have enough time. Our biggest challenge, and this relates very much with our project, is that we're only meeting 50% of the need right now. So for every person who comes to our door, returning somebody else away who is in need. And so the question is always, why don't you just open more days? That would be easier said than done. Dentists, these are dentists who are volunteering their time. And it's not necessarily the easiest thing in the world to, to recruit more volunteers for that kind of specialized work. thing in the world to, to recruit more volunteers for that kind of specialized work. Some days, of course, are not a good, good option, and the dentists are in their practice Monday through Thursday, which limits us to Fridays and Saturdays. The idea is with the expansion is to add more chairs. It would be moving it from the current location, which is on the second floor of the church, to the first floor of the church. Makes it much easier for access as well, and to go from two chairs to four chairs. This would allow us, even if we have the same number of dentists, our goal is to, to continue to recruit more dentists, but it would, it would allow us to actually serve more people because we would have a more efficient flow of people. So if you can imagine, the way it is right now, you would put two people in a chair, if we're able to actually have four chairs, then we can actually have someone in the chair being prepped, someone being worked on, someone hosts conversation, and then starting with another person to be prepped as well. And it improves the flow. We can most likely either meet or come really close to meeting with full need that we currently have here now. So that's really what I wanted to share with you a little bit, and I'm certainly open to any questions that you all have.
Thank you. The responses you sent back with regards to funding question, the first three question sounded, you had sort of more informal conversations with a contractor, nothing really informal?
No, we, we had, we have the, and I apologize if I did not get sent in, but we do have the, what was provided is the estimate, and it lays out all of the, all of the expenses, but there are, there's really the, the three parts that I put in the additional questions. And so the first, the first phase, I'm trying to remember in the, in the application, the original application, I think we had it broken down by what the.
Oh, which you're looking at with regards to asbestos new wants. And telling me when there's a need?
So that, like, the rehab is like the phase one, which is, is kind of gutting the room from its, what it's currently, and then that's the funding.
Did you see the budget?
Off the top of my head, it was approximately, like, I'm not sure I had it with me, but I apologize for that.
So the midstate quote was 235?
So 235, that would be for the, that's the rehab of, of the space in there. And then phase two is for the equipment and the supplies. And that's, that's not midstate. That would be Henry Schein is for some of the supplies as well as, I don't remember the other, that was like 180,000 for the equipment. That's, those, that's kind of like phase two, once the space gets, gets rehabbed.
So does that give you up to the 435?
Yeah, again, I don't remember exactly what, what numbers are. We're also, you know, trying to take a look, especially on the supplies and the equipment, to try and find savings, and if we can find folks who would be able to provide that, that equipment. But that's, like I said, that's the second, second phase, is once the room is actually ready to, to be able to handle those things.
So you have 45,000 of fundraising, magic donations. Have you had any headway on that since you're?
We've had, we've had informal conversations, we don't have anything important about funding on that.
Any other questions?
What's your timeline?
So what we had submitted is that we could do, the phase one, we would be able to begin in March of, of this year, and then, and then have that, would take, I think it was like 12 or 14 weeks, I don't remember exactly. And then, so that we can take phase one, and then we'd be able to, to work on phase two, which is getting, obtaining the, the equipment and the supplies.
Is there any ridiculous delay on any time?
What, what do you mean?
Like, do you order now, six months later, maybe?
Oh, no, no, it wouldn't be anything like that. It would be, it's, it's really kind of nailing down, I mean, we've taken a look, and we know exactly, head drawings of what's needed for each, for each of the, the four charred areas as well as for like the sanitizing station and all of that type of stuff. So we know what all the equipment is, there's a little list looking out. But it's more a matter of, again, it's searching out different suppliers to see where, where can we, who can we work with, and how can we get the best deal on that to reduce our cost number. But that's, again, that's more phase two, so not as, not as focused on that until, until we get to that, to that point. But it would, it would take.
Have you entered into a contract with the contractor?
So midstate is who we have been in conversation with, we have not signed anything yet because we wanted, wanted to see how this went.
Just asking because they provided a poll, which doesn't have like breakdown, like it just gives you.
Sure.
Summary of the activities or tasks and the cost, where if you, I guess, were in contract days, we, this board would be able to know that our painting is going to cost this amount, demo is going to cost this amount, radiation, whatever, we discussed this. But I don't think you have that.
Right.
There's no other questions? Thank you, Melchior.
Yeah.
Thank you. Do you all need any furtherers with the belt tower?
So the belt tower is still not prepared yet, mostly because PPL took forever to power lines. Power lines have moved, so as soon as the weather is above freezing, we are going to commence with repairs of the belt tower. So, yeah, that was, that was, but PPL just pressure PPL.
Is HAV doing that work?
HAV is going to be doing that. Thanks, have a good night.
Thanks. Well, I guess I'll take credit. I think it kind of makes sense.
You're so welcome. You're so very welcome.
This must be the hot seat.
Yes, you are on. You are.
You want to sit here?
Wherever you would like to sit, anywhere.
All right.
That's a cozy spot.
That's perfect. I can remember your floor.
I can remember here.
All right.
I recognize this place as soon as I started.
In trouble now.
For what?
The hour.
There you go.
Is it in number two? It's going to be the second.
Yeah, it's in there, it's out of order, it's spelled out second.
It is spelled out.
Yeah. You gotta go in here still.
If you haven't.
I can barely handle the one remote, do I? I did.
I like technology, especially if it works. Just saying. Thank you much, sorry for the delay there for a moment.
All right.
You have approximately 15 minutes for your presentation this evening, so I'm going to ask you to identify yourselves through public record, this is also being streamed, so on YouTube, and you can access the video later if you wish via the Gaming Advice website. That said, best of luck to you, and we'll set a timer for 12 minutes, so if it goes off, we need to wrap some things up.
With the introduction, does that incorporate laucap?
Well, no, go right ahead.
All right. A.J. Riley, the pastor of the Second Baptist Church, the oldest African-American church in Harrisburg. We were established in 1869, we've had there 37 years at this location, pastoring, sharing the gospel, and good news to those that enter.
Hi, good evening to everyone, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is LaShanna Stouts, I am the daughter of Pastor A.J. Riley Sr. I'm, I'm also a consultant assisting with the church with, with many of the business ventures that we have, and we're pleased to be in home with you, so thank you.
And I'm Jean George, the developer here to support and aid one of our most favorite clients. That's your different earbuds.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, we need to. You put this on here.
Oh, it's here.
Okay. Yes, so essentially, without reviewing the narrative again, as my pastor, my dad mentioned, that Second Baptist mission, mission is to prepare people for community and bodily responsibilities and leadership through example. And we do a variety of religious, social, and supportive services, both members of our congregation as well as those not in our faith, and also those in need as well. As Pastor Riley mentioned, we are one of the oldest churches in Harrisburg, and soon to celebrate 150 years, we are one of the historical spots when individuals are taking tours of Harrisburg. And our project need essentially is, the main objective, is to assist in part of the long overdue and necessary repairs and replacements associated with our inefficient and aging HVAC system. For years, we have certainly managed and maintained, and did minor repairs as needed when the system really is beyond its life cycle at this particular point. And there are several operational updates and repairs, and that's the first step in our preservation effort in preparation for our 150th celebration, soon to be in three years. I think that kind of wraps it up in reference to it, but really is, our outcome essentially is to complete all repairs and replacements necessary for the modern operation of our HVAC system. And this is, this amount that we are requesting is a portion of what it would take to do the whole overall of our mechanical system that is in great need, and we do want to certainly keep up with the preservation efforts of this beautiful building that we have at Second Baptist.
I can further elaborate, here regarding to our ministry. At Second Baptist Church, we have a daycare center that's been in operation for the last 15 years. We also have a drug and alcohol center at a separate location, Fifth Street in the city of Harrisburg and other those we talk to individuals that are walking in this, her mode of sobriety, that means they are free of drugs, they are loosed to us, and we find out difference, but nevertheless, we are there to assist where we can to get them back in normal society.
And, I'm sorry, I wanted to add one more thing, that our cost that we are requesting is 19% of the total cost of the whole church project, so I just wanted to give you that particular percentage.
So how did you do this for us? We need to, we need to.
We, we did, we did the, after they left, we went on that. We did the best we could, which during the summer, we have window units in our windows, and sometimes they will function, and sometimes they decide not to work, and we just had to be tolerant of it for what it was, and make the best of what it was that it was working.
So I'm guessing from what I'm hearing, we need to make the best out of that situation right now. So if we're not able to fully fund the 75, which is 19% of your overall project, but it looks like the priority is like the 55,000 for the HVAC DC portion, is that what you mean?
That's correct. That's correct, sir.
Any other questions?
How much are we planning to request from the National Trust?
The National Trust?
Well, we're still in the process, we're doing a detailed application of process right now. Many of you know it's not the easiest, and there's quite a bit of information that we need to compile and put together, but we would request, if not the same amount or more, to help cover the remaining costs of this. And then, of course, also seeking other climbing sources as well, that may come our way in partnerships that we have as well.
Can I further elaborate? Is there any type of assistance from the National Trust that we could tap into, to assist us in getting through for the outstanding amounts?
I think you'd best have a meeting to speak to with somebody from the State Historic Preservation Office, or Bureau of Historic Preservation for the state. Unfortunately, I think most of the times it's, it was tight to, to need to receive the funding from the State Historic Preservation.
Can you talk about the State Historical Preservation, State Historical Preservation?
Well, I refer to the, it's the Bureau of Historic Preservation that falls under the State Historic Preservation Office, or who I believe is Andrea Lowry, who was the head of the museum. But it's, it's, falls underneath, or I think it's given that. I'm pretty sure the office you're looking for is the Bureau of Historic Preservation.
I forgot, there were so many of that papers.
I noticed there's, I noticed that as well, yes.
Is there any other questions? Thank you much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just, just before we conclude, can you tell me the timeframe of what you are going to, are in retrospect to us in what we're in buying?
That's how it has been in the past. This grant cycle was sort of pushed back some from prior grant cycles, it started in June, and so the anticipations will be on April 1.
That before, you mean April 1st?
Well, before, before the thought that not as early as the past grant cycles, because we're a month, we're basically a month or so behind from prior grant cycles.
Prior years, we started right after Thanksgiving, or right before Thanksgiving.
Before, yeah.
And we're Thanksgiving, these hearings, and we're starting June.
Today's our first, we're doing things like this tomorrow, Thursday.
All right.
Monday and Tuesday next week, and October Thursday, so we're still gathering.
All right. Will we be, you be in touch with them in writing or in telephone?
If you were to be awarded, you would receive a letter via US mail, that you would be notified. I mean, obviously, the awards are made public before we can get your official award letter sent out, but you will receive a letter in the mail, letting you know if you are awarded or even if you're denied. Both get a, a letter.
Let me ask you, there's one address are you using the church, or are you using by?
Yeah, so.
I just closed this.
The address I have is 424. The address I have is four twenty-four...
Foster Street, L-R-S-T-E-R?
Yeah.
Foster Street, one seven one oh two.
Yeah, it's whatever you had on, you have one seven one oh two.
Okay.
If you need to update it, you can just let me know.
Right, okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
And you mentioned that it is made public. Where is it typically made public?
I don't, usually like pen line releases. Yeah, I think commissioners, yeah.
Okay.
And normally what recommendations are made, and then following meetings they make, they have something?
Yeah, typically this board will meet and come up with recommendations to put forward to county commissioners. And usually it's within days or not more than a week that the commissioners take up the recommendations at one of their public meetings and has broken indicated that's covered by the lives, Business Journal. It's, you know, in fact, has been passed recent years, you know, they use, so.
The frequency of applying for such programs, is this annual or once? It is annual?
Yes.
I don't want the buzzer to go off. I'm very cognizant of this.
But again, that's Q and answer.
I'm like, we're coming up to twelve.
Well, actually, I wouldn't just conclude by saying, I know I can be very licentious, I understand that, but the whole idea and the premise of it is that we are in very much need of such a program of assistance because of the environment of people that we associate ourselves with and trying to help them is a very difficult challenge, trying to sit in a place wherein you are trying to assist people and you're hot or you're cold. It doesn't sit very well. And so we are asking that an opportunity available itself, that something very capable will come our way as we challenge this program.
Somebody's got some screens.
Little, little pull. I'm telling you, I do so many meetings at my job, and it's like I have like an intro topic.
Do you wake up before you're online?
I do. I don't know what it is, but I love so much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Um, no, no, you can just leave that there. Yep.
Thanks again.
That's amazing. I have to hear.
Yeah.
I saw names on the terms of staging.
Pretty much.
A billion years ago.
Oh, you're much funnier. You have to see on the summer, you look like...
Sure. How are you doing? Good, are you?
Doing great.
Sometimes works the PowerPoint thing down. Yeah. Maybe try down.
Down.
Yeah, there you go. Down is up.
I was trying to raise that, to mess it up, how about that?
No, don't worry, you did do well. So thanks for being on time, and your presentation timeframe is approximately fifteen minutes, so also time for twelve, so we have bells are going off. So hurry things along, it's also being livestreamed via YouTube. And if you want to look at the video later on, it is on our topic, Gaming Advice Report's webpage, we'll link there. Other than that, please identify yourself for the public record, and when you're ready, yours first.
Sure. Well, good afternoon, everyone. My name is I Chris Gass, San Juan Copic Ortho Church at seventeen oh one State Street in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. So I appreciate you guys all being here and taking time to be giving a little presentation and why we're doing what we're looking for. So this is for the granted local Shelly's School Grant Application, and we're looking for funding for this, a shared pedestrian road. We're looking within the city. We had a huge big fire, it was about a three long fire, hundred thirty-five, hundred fifty. Fire personnel were at the church in the afternoon and luckily took care of the fire and the owners there, you know, fortunately did enough to cover the pollution. Like first out, made huge fine, good church, our home church, and it was very bad for us. So we're trying to, you know, increase our safety and security, you know, safety and security is our main goal. So we're trying to increase that. I worked with another grant to get some money to do as much as we can, of course, and then go over all of it. And with the, the fire chief of Harrisburg City being recommending that, you know, we go through this grant process so we can complete our fire system for our church. So with that being said, I will go through presentation, and please let me know if you have any questions. Alright? The importance of upgrading our fire alarm system. So upgrading our fire alarm system, as I mentioned, is crucial to me to monitor safety standards, ensuring effective emergency response, and safeguarding the ability of our congregation and our community, if anyone that comes into our community. We have an open door policy, whoever likes to come in is more than welcome to come in and for our services. Our historical significance, San Juan Copic Church, of Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, not only serves as a spiritual haven, but also plays a pride, maybe the role of preserving our cultural heritage of the heritage of the community, reflecting the historical evolution of the Christian religious practices, and fostering a sense of belonging amongst our many diverse communities. We have communities that come from all over, whether Egypt, New York, New Jersey, all over, and they come to our church, and we teach them, you know, our faith, beliefs, and they get baptized and stuff like that. So we have a lot that come through. And being as from the capital, people like to travel through, and these seats are open, so we'll teach everything about our church. We have, I think, now about almost three hundred fifty, four hundred people, they tend to read the pieces, so it's a lot. Yeah, we had a review, I had a missed the other day, Christmas yesterday, tell me Christmas in Brooklyn. Thank you, yeah. So we had about seven hundred people in church, so. That's why safety and security is very important. Thank you, thank you, appreciate it. So benefits of compliance with our current fire codes, so three different categories, improve emergency preparedness, community engagement, and support for community. For emergency preparedness, compliance with the codes enhances our emergency preparedness and showing the church equipped with our latest technology for rapid protection and response during any fire incident. And increased community engagement, we believe that a safe environment fosters increased community engagement, pushing more individuals to participate in our church activities and events, thereby strengthening community bonds and support networks. And our community as well, we have a dual role, as of course, as a place of worship and emergency shelter, which enhances its value to the city. The project, we provide some critical assets that supports guys with water and the safety goals. And the way we support the community, I'll talk about this a little bit later, all in our slides, we are the primary backup location of the Harrisburg School District. This is right next door to us, if they have any evacuation, or have they, they have, they're more than welcome, we give them our keys, we give them our files, they can use the church at any time. Just let us know, go ahead, let us know, open the church, go easier for the kids, right? The kids, the parents, the teachers, everyone comes in, use the church, we're in back, and stuff like that. So we promote, make sure everything is safe for them. Alright, we have the church of our church, this is actually a little bit of it yesterday, a little bit early on, like, sorry, didn't, didn't send it here, but that's a lot of our people that we have. This is just our both floor, we have downstairs basement as well, where it's our overflow. So down the front is all of our deacons, it's not pictured in front, we have an altar, our priest and other deacons are right there as well. And in the back area, there you go. Leisure?
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, this is the deacon's area, in this area we're a priest's place, and this is a congregation here. So we have a lot of people, this actually picture from last night, that we had at our church, it's actually very frequent, we have to grab that and leave later. Alright? It can impact on our local community, support for our local economy. With the grant funds that hopefully, you know, through approval, through inquiries, and through a project, we, that would be obviously given to company, it's worth to do the project, and they would use us to stimulate economic growth. With that, ensuring that wages are spent within the community, whether they want their lunch or grocery shopping or whatever, and we believe that increases local businesses and services within the city of Harrisburg. Also job creation opportunities, we're gonna hire, or at least we're looking to hire local contractors within our community, within the city of Harrisburg, maybe even within Delft County, to hire them, and that reduce any unemployment and foster a skilled workforce that can contribute to future projects within the city of Harrisburg. The last thing is our community bonds, engaging local workers, it's a sense of ownership, you know, people dropping by, hey, I work on that church, I work on that project. So we want to try to do that, you know, I think it gives a pride. In addition, as I said earlier, we are the primary backup location for the Harrisburg School District, in case of emergency evacuation occurred, we're trying to alternate type for the kids and teachers. So if you don't, people go by, so you know what this is really, this church is really helpful, so you want to use it to give back to community and also to provide the safety for all the, all the core of the church. Free circulation of funds in our economy, we have, when we look at it, there's like a multiplier effect to it. First part is initial investment in funds, generates as multiple, multiplier of effects as they go through various sectors. Before people are receiving funds, like through their pay, through the office, or paying these contractors, they're using it to get different products and services. It gets people working a little bit, community investment, if you come in and you know you want to support the church, you know, go back towards it, we are supporting through grant with you guys, and we also are providing it back again. Building that saving local supply chains, so virtually local, and contractors and purchases nearby suppliers, reinforcing local supply chain, ensuring the economic benefits of the advantage are maximized within the Harrisburg area and Delft County as well. So that's a couple ways that we're looking to think about recirculating funds within the economy of the money that we do receive. Long-term benefits, community investment returns. I mentioned earlier, it will go back to the community and will appear as a safe space for all to be utilized really within moments' notice. Also with this is that we like to open the church's doors, this is our open door policy. This may be a moving of the community that asks to use our reception hall to host a small event or something, so, good guess, sure, go ahead. Now, we're a little bit more restricted, I don't feel it's safe, you know, the place is not a hundred percent safe, I don't feel safe, and they'll say, okay, someone outside is coming to everyone. You know, I want to have a safe place, if people want to use it, go ahead. So if an emergency happens within the county, you want to use the church as shelter by all of you, go ahead, you know. So I want to be, I want to be able to do that and provide for the church. Call, show them the opportunity, so Historical Landmark Church, I think it was built in nineteen oh nine or nineteen nineteen, if I'm not mistaken, it's been there for quite a bit, so it's a historical church. That fire would devastate us, they said ten minutes, and that fire, they're planning to chase me down, unfortunately. But luckily, thankfully, to our city of Harrisburg Fire Department and the surrounding agencies, we definitely helped out a lot, so. And of course, increased foot traffic from festivals and community, and that can boost local commerce. We stopped all the foot, all of our festivals, everything, saying, hey, it's not a hundred percent safe, we never, we're not a hundred percent what we would be for. So that's the biggest thing that we got. Next thing, talk about safety, right? Participation from diverse groups, including families, environmental population, trust, get, community trust, we do Sunday schools for all of our kids to, I think, remember the word of God, and that just, the word of God, but also events in the area to teach them, you know, what's going on in the area. Past thorough care, and we do also do outreach at many local hospitals. For people that need help, we try to do it the best that we can. Community investment, we invest, investment in safety updates reflects our dedication to our church's future, and ongoing contributions to Harrisburg community, and ensuring it remains a vital resource for many generations to come. So as the church has been built in nineteen oh nine, nineteen nineteen, I think the major decade is so far, we want to reduce that for many more generations to come. Alright? So what it came to safety of the church as a historical landmark, it's valuable to Harrisburg's cultural identity. And, and economics stimulation, grant funds will primarily support local labor, paying top opportunities, foster economic growth, as we circulate within the community, living of businesses and services, and want to increase community engagement. Safe church environment encourages increased participation in community, community events, social cohesion, and reinforcing the church's role as central help in diverse communities and engagement.
So can you confirm the amount you're requesting?
Yes, so I requested, wait, it was eighty thousand, I said ninety, I said ninety thousand total. We said eighty thousand, I'm sorry, ninety thousand from, from the grant, we were working to do ten thousand dollars of our own money to help out, you know, too much, as you've been put into for helping this safety of our church. There was a question about that, if we went forward on to eighty thousand, if there was more than ninety thousand in ten, ten thousand dollars, and if we can buy a kind of grant to continue the project, we have to pull a little bit more, and we can try and work to try to put a little more. As a church being nonprofit, we don't have as much funds unfortunately to work with, it's a lot more on two stairs, I don't know, it's fifty bucks.
How do you cover the cost of the fire protection system? Have a quote from them?
Yes, I have quotes, I had lots of multiple different quotes from vendors. I looked at the lowest quote, and I went from my lowest between ninety dollars up to the most, you know?
Can you provide that quote?
Sure, sure, yeah, I have one quote here, actually, with me here right now, this one here, this one was ninety-two, five, that's one of the lower ones, and they've done work with it before, but of course, they updated this today, one thing...
I'll give that to you.
Sorry. They did mention to me on the phone that, of course, hey, proof there on the way, it's not included, and also, the time that they did this vote was actually back in the summer, the original time for this, they said, of course, with inflation, it goes up more. So I said, most likely it's going to be closer to the hundred thousand dollars, so.
Any other questions?
Could you just email me the quotes that you have?
Sure.
That way I can provide them and put them into your file for the board to...
That way I can provide them and put them into your file for the board to review.
Okay. Yeah, one for closer to a tournament, I did talk to him, he's big and said new one. Yeah, of more, who's update is possible. So those ones he sent me, this one I had, it's easy, I just got the update for today, but he told me. It's gonna be higher than that number because of.
Yeah, just if you could just email it to me when you receive it, that works, thank you. You had mentioned, the car friend you mentioned for the outreach, this program doesn't have. Those things are required, because whatever you're subject to, or the church is subject to, the law.
Okay.
Regulations, things like that.
Okay, yeah, I've worked with management before, they said, there's a certain dollar. A certain dollar amount, yeah, no, you work with, you have to do the building, where it is. So if that's not, then that's good, then that makes it probably a little bit less. Luckily, I never had to go over the dollar amount to make prevailing wins. But um. That probably make this, you know, it'd be more, yes, but not as what's in. It's a good thing.
Yeah.
Trying to save every dollar that we can.
Well, that's it for us, thank you much, good luck to you.
Appreciate it, thank you, appreciate, thank you for your time. Is there, you know what I should expect from you after today?
This is an idea, but you should know something good later than. What if we see.
April, yeah.
April.
Please send a letter for me.
Okay. Okay, so, thank you. Thank you, thank you, you as well, thank you. Yeah.
Come on in, you can have a seat.
I got it.
Got it. Good evening.
Oh, no.
Oh, she thought she.
No, not.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Still the same.
After tomorrow, you can.
I told people maybe at M O K day when we had another holiday, then it's officially done.
Well, thank you for your patience, I'm sorry we put it down behind here. Uh, you are allotted to keep this for your presentation, I'll put, set the timer for twelve minutes. So if you hear that go off, we know we need to wrap these things up, so presenter has has their time as well. Uh, this is being livestreamed on YouTube. And if you want to leave the video later on, you can go to the G M V three four twelve site. So please identify yourselves for the public record, if you would, please, we're starting. And once you do that, I'll hit this timer.
Macedonia's mission area about this church, my name is Dr. Brian, he's a pastor there. It's a vegan vegan manual marshal, chairman of the chairman of the academy. This is Esha Mobley, who is our community liaison. Justice Hope from Justice House of Hope, a marked job as our potential contractor for our project. Good evening. We start, okay. Well. Macedonia's mission has always been the church in the heart of the city, with the city at heart. And we have always strived to uphold that mantra in various nearly projects. From our food bank to our fresh food market, we have various uh, community outreach programs. Having programs for children, having programs for uh, the youth and young adults. Each is going on the detail as far as everything that we're getting to, because there is a whole lot of things that we're getting to. We really take that mantra of reaching out to the community at heart, part of the vision of the church outreach. Why are we here today? This is cut through the chase. We're here today because we have a special project that we wanna see come to fruition. It's always been my heart, ever since I was in. Back in my training. The church needs to be a vehicle for the community at large. Church is not for itself, it's for the community. And there is a sore need, not just in Harrisburg, not just in Pennsylvania, but across this nation. Macedonia wants to be a part of helping to alleviate that pain that's out there. And that is for victims of domestic violence, homelessness. Human trafficking, human trafficking, okay. We have a parsonage. That we wanna convert into a safe house. And we have tried to find any other place in Harrisburg that has that's doing anything like this. We have to find it, the closest thing that we found is in Philadelphia. So this is a unique opportunity that we see that we can. Be a ministry to those that are that are in need currently in our community. Sadly, this is a worldwide issue. Sadly, it's an issue right in Harrisburg, and it may affect people that you know and don't know they're even going through it. That's the scary part of life. You may not even know that they're going through. We have a parsonage that needs renovations. From top to bottom, okay? But we want this converted so that can be that safe house for these victims of this. I'm back in college of light, of light on our nation right now, light on our world right now. Uh, Sister Justice is on the forefront of this battle. She can re decide if we wanted to partner with her, Justice House of Hope, to form this parsonage and call it the House of Mercy. The House of Mercy. Because as a Christian, we feel that mercy will be extended to us, and we need to extend that mercy to others, it's called grace and mercy. Sister Justice, if you wanna go into a little bit more detail?
Yes, um, thank you for taking this time to meet with us there, definitely appreciate it. Um, Harrisburg faces a significant challenge, addressing the need of the bottom. Long uh, populations dealing with domestic violence sessions, so human trafficking and sex, sex trafficking. Um, we work with ethnic youth, so we start with the age from the age of eight up to the age of twenty, thirty. We also have a contract with children and youth, the human occupation that works, we work with those victims that we care for. Justice House of Hope are giving them services with prevention and intervention. So we have a contract, so these kids that are in foster homes have no place to go, and most foster homes cannot. Take care of the children the best of their ability, because a lot of people don't know what trafficking looks like. I'm a survivor of human trafficking, so the purpose of this safe house is to be able to give them that safe place to be. And receive the services that Justice House of Hope give them now by having a safe house for individuals. The safe house that we're talking about, having a partnership with the church will allow us to do that. The house has, I believe it was six rooms, incorrect, five, six rooms, so that will be able to house each room to victims. So and keep that in mind in addressing the Harrisburg current need. There's no safe house dedicated to serving victims of human trafficking. Collaboration with um, the church, also with C Y S and juvenile probation to ensure that the safe house will be. Into existence according to the needs and collaboration with extreme lab or referrals and increase accessibility. Provide a safe place for them to be. The safe house will not only offer immediate safety, but also include the trauma-influencing counseling, the life skills training, the education and opportunity. For them to change their lives. They also have trauma therapy, case management, these services will empower individuals to rebuild their life and to become independent. Contribute to our community. There isn't a safe house for youth in the state of Pennsylvania. The closest one they have is in Brooks County. But they're not working with youth. This will be the first house that works with the infants, well, we're not considering them as infants, but the youth under the age of twenty-one. Um, how the safe house will benefit Harrisburg, it will be a public safety, drive the refuge, and rather be reducing the risk of being exploited. Kids are being exploited daily. Kids are being exploited, their parents are thinking their kids aren't in school, and they are not. Kids, kids do go home by being exploited, because they're working Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Once a time, they're lying to their parents where they are. Pennsylvania is number nine in the state, I mean, the nation, because we, we are number nine, so that's telling you how important that. The safe house for the kids that we are working with in our community. Some of the community, uh, we educate them to know what to look for in our community. By being able to give them the statistics that they're working with, by having statistics, working with children and youth and juvenile patients. Has opened their eyes that they're moving to a safe place for these kids. They're not moving like they should in the foster home, foster homes are having a hard time. Making sure they're safe when they're running away. We work with the local police department, when they do prostitution rates in Delfin County, we we allow them when they do that. So we have firsthand information, I work for the local police department, and we have saved over forty-seven. Youth for this, um, for last year, for some youth we have saved. We have had a toll from children and youth to do an activation. For this year, over fifteen kids, they're given to our organization to work with them.
This is for the police and the.
That's correct, that's correct. Uh, we also work with the school district. We had two male guys that were, didn't even know they were being trafficked, and they were on a sports game. And we were able to work with those kids who have their collaboration with children and youth. And was able to give them services they need for them to be able to understand what trafficking is and what it looks like. Uh, they just thought they had a nice date with uh, uh, older individuals, and they didn't have an idea of what trafficking is. So the safe house is uh, is something that's necessary and is a good safe place for the kids to have opportunities to identify when more people are. Justice House of Hope is committed to meeting this effort and transferring each individual to be who they can be. And be all that they can be by working with that trauma that they have been dealing with, and to be able to understand it's not their fault. Being a victim of human trafficking, um, is very hard for people to understand, because people, first of all, they had some kids, why do we need? Unfortunately, they can't leave. They can't leave, make a decision, because they are being forced to, and they are being forced to do these activities. And they wonder, why can't they take the money and run? They don't even get their hands blown. But there's a such thing called cash app, so those kids will never be able to see them. They take their shoes from them, they will not have anywhere to be able to get out or to run, because it's cold out right now, and some of them are just put in terrible places. So that's the reason why we decided to collaborate with them, with the church to be able to use their parts, to make sure that we be the first. Um, to have a safe house for the youth that we love.
I just wanna add, emphasize body, mind, and spirit. We wanna protect their bodies, their physical bodies, but also we wanna help their mind, they have gone through so much. Trauma. And their spirits, they've been broken down, they, some, something. I get caught up, you know, people have a bad impression of themselves, we want to restore. We want, we want them to know that everybody out there isn't to get the visit out there to use them. And that's what this House of Mercy wants.
Again, I add the location, the great central location for accessibility to other community resources, and we want to. As they're healed, they're going to need to reach out for services, we're right on the bus route, the Y is, Y M C A that has services. With the daycare center is right up the street, the school camp curtain is down the street, Catherine Hershey's school is down the street, the federal building is down the street. So I'm expecting our neighborhood to get even safer as the days go on. So just wanna be able to offer our city residents that, like they told me, there's a hole there. We have a lot of victims, but nowhere for them to go. And I myself was raped and kidnapped at the age of seventeen, so for me, this is a little bit for us to do.
I would just like to add that, I know we recommended a monthly five thousand dollars, and we were costing a hundred fifty thousand dollars. And because of the scourge of human trafficking around the world, the country, and its state in Pennsylvania. Because we could no doubt any other than one other place to make the house is suffering. That is why, that's one of the reasons that we wanted to expedite it, and I love to hear recommended. Uh, amount, and Mr. Giles, who's a contractor on that, on that project, would be. Guiding and ensuring that the property is safe.
Good evening, thank you for the, um, speaking. We have a certain attribute of our, we need to be able to install from the property. It's not easy, bro. Um, we have. Consulting with systems for a state-of-the-art audio and video, video uh, system to recover the property to many diseases. We are going to install a security fence around, because there's a, there's a, there's a rise in that. Uh, we're gonna secure that entire area, and if anyone who's to approach that area. The staff that we give inside will be alerted immediately. And it would have, everyone have facial recognition. To know if this is someone they know, or if there's someone that is unknown to them, then they can alert. The police, as well as the security staff that we deal on, on, on site. Basically, up in that, we're gonna break up all of the, all of the categories, the H P A C system. Pretty much. Everything in house, all the systems in house. We're gonna make it as comfortable and as secure as we can. But the bottom line of this entire process. If you decide to uh, provide that, define before this project. You will literally be instrumental in changing the trajectory of many people's lives. That's the bottom line here, not the dollar amount, not uh, uh, what we're doing, although everybody gets sitting in the stable's company. Dollar be on this side, yes, sir. The bottom line is, we need to step up and start doing the things that we need to be that, that we know we need to do, and this is one of them.
I would just like to add, secondly, we're seeking expedited restoration, exploring stained glass windows. And and in our church, and some uh, small uh. Construction foundation work as well. We lost a large stained glass window, uh, we didn't get it to be restored, it costs us twenty-eight thousand dollars to replace. And the cost of the windows to be even to restore and to replace has gone up exponentially since the pandemic. And so that's why we're also asking for expedited. Issuance and above the amount on that as well. Uh, I'd just like to say that since the pandemic, our capital funds account. Improvement account, we spent over forty thousand dollars around and made this repairs these since the pandemic. Along with uh, funds from the prior grants that we received. But most, most of repairs, if you look at the uh, at the uh. At the renovations were included in bitch purchase report that we, it is also in the uh. In the extra subtext of this um, application. And we use the bitch report to do our, to prioritize our budget, our project, budget, budget, budget. And most of these things, we didn't expect to happen, these are all kind of emergency situations that came up prior to what we were going to. Had them scheduled, which is why we got them done ahead of time. An update on the um, funding sources. We uh, uh, applied for security grant fund for forty-five thousand dollars, it was denied. But um, um, Justice, Justice, she's our partner, and she has, has the uh, ability. She has several of the grants she's supplied for, and she's gonna allow us to make up that difference of the twenty-five dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars. So our budget did change, did change it all on that. Uh, update on some time, or just more specific on the timelines. The the parstage, parstage is anticipated to take eight to twelve weeks. It's, it's expected to have five full-time employees plus some volunteers from the desert mission. And other nonprofit agencies. The timeline for the uh. Pepsi last is ten to fourteen days, shop platform five to seven days, base the wall ten to twelve days, but there'll be eight full-time people. Spread out, so two weeks will be the extent of that. Base of all, ten to twelve days, but there'll be eight full-time people spread out, so two weeks will be the extent of that, uh, of that project.
We have any questions?
I don't.
Thank you.
Several. So several years ago, a woman came in to ask her funds. And she mentioned that she was in sex trafficking, that she talked about the house that she wants to divide. So up until that time, I had heard of sex trafficking, you know, could guess what it was, but not. I've heard you say both sex trafficking, human trafficking. So are we talking in Slade, or is that the square of human trafficking?
Human, human trafficking, you can look at it two ways. Sex trafficking and human trafficking is actually two different things. Human trafficking is when they're, or taking one from the home and trafficking them out. Sex trafficking more, more or less is when they're at home and being trafficked from the house.
Oh. So it's not like you're keeping others of your service, so, so.
It could be.
That could be.
Right, the human trafficking.
Sex trafficking is the kids that go to school every day, but there's somebody sexing them, and their parents over.
That, that was with this girl.
Yeah.
And then, uh, and I know maybe a part of the stuff. Why are you qualified to pronounce sex? I mean, I think it's wonderful, but the qualified being a person. So.
Well, I started, I'm a director of outpatient, for Dr. Howard.
Oh, same with Dr. Good.
Okay, yeah.
Anything else? Thank you much, and we wish you best. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Have great letters. Is this your house, sir, or, or was this, is that, there you go, you're on this? You're welcome. Well, I love that writers too, where you didn't know. You've never heard. No, I know. Sex trafficking. Hello.
Hi, this is me.
All right, good evening, thanks for, uh, your patience.
That's okay, I was glad to say in fact to some of the people.
So we have approximately fifteen minutes for your presentation, also the time, twelve minutes, we're gonna go off. We can wrap it up, so we can remember who you were chatting with out there in here as well, right?
Okay.
Um, let's, uh, please identify yourself for the public record. We're also being livestreamed, the, uh, YouTube channel. Any other questions? Not the first time we've done it, first here.
You look lovely, don't worry about it.
You're gonna make a face.
Look, I'm trying to hide for real. Um, my name is Gordon Scott.
You're seriously trying to hide for your own safety?
No, 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 I'm trying to hide because of all of the questions people ask me when I'm away from my regular job. They need help all the time, so that's.
Oh.
Oh, no, that was, so anyways, um, but thank you, thank you so much. Thank you all for allowing me to be here. Uh, my name is Gordon Scott, and I am, um, co-founder, um, and Chief Financial Officer for Breaking the Chains. Um. Do you want me to write that one down?
I'm sorry?
Do you want me to answer real quick?
I just have them up, you can, however you want to do your presentation, I just have it up, whatever.
Okay, so first of all, I want to address the levers of support they do all receive. Now, some of the levers of support that you all receive for our project, or for us, weren't called for the project, but some of them were in support of our organization and work that we do in the community. Um, my reason for being here tonight is to request funding for two homes or two houses that we have for men coming home from prison. Those houses, um, we bought early on in, uh, when we formed Breaking the Chains. They are now in need of some repairs, and I put them in for, um, each one. So I did the roof, the windows, and the, um, heating or HVAC. The reason why we are requesting the funding for these two houses is because those men coming home from prison, we, they pay a hundred and fifty dollars a week. Um, and the funds that we get from the house, we just turn around and put them back in. We pay electric bill, gas bill, um, the water, sewer and trash. We pay, um, and the property taxes because we owe those two outright. Now, the reason why we're asking for the funding to prepare them is because now the, um, as far as like their electric or the gas, the heat is bringing in the windows because the heat's going out the windows for the roof, we need to repair the roof. So whenever we have to do those repairs, if the money that we're receiving doesn't cover that, we have to raise the rent. And so when we raise the rent, the guys that are home, coming home from prison, a hundred and fifty dollars, obviously, we're one of the lowest ones in the city to actually offer that amount of money for the rent. Everybody else is paying two hundred, one seventy-five. So what does that do to an individual that's just coming home from prison? They might not even be able to pay that. If we don't do the repairs now, we're gonna have to raise the rent. Um, I just looked at our one light bill. The light bill is like five hundred and something dollars for one month. So as we're looking at all of the utilities and all of the things, and we have to make minor, minor repairs, like if something goes wrong with the door or something like that, cleaning and maintenance of the property, it doesn't, what we're receiving doesn't actually cover. So it's even breaking, we're either, we're either breaking even or we're in a hole. Especially if somebody transitions or goes back to prison, and then we have to, um, find somebody else to stay here. Now, we don't run out of people that are looking for places to live, however, are they able to, um, keep up with their rent? So sometimes we have to go to health managers or somebody to try to get them the help that they need. Now, we do, um, provide them, like, this safe, the safe housing and all of that. We provide that with them, and that's one of the, um, I think that's every time you come to, we all, we all provide you a safe housing and a, and affordable housing. That's what we try to stay in that guideline. Um, so you asked about the Boyd Foundation. We did ask for money for them, I haven't heard from them yet. Um, and I think that was, I think that was the only question, the only other question. Um, yeah, the other source of funding is for the rent received from the property. So I think that's, that's it. But for both of the properties, the, um, the cause is just a certain, is for us to ask for the funding to help with the cost of replacing or repairing.
Are any of your tenants able to do work and pay them?
So some, so some of the tenants, like, they, they might come and they might help, but I'm not gonna say we don't recommend that, but then if they help, then we should pay them. And I guess you guys know in a nonprofit, you have to report on that, see, this is where we pay, this is how we pay. And we can do that, but we haven't had many that were actually able to, or that used the, oh, I, I can do this, I'm the manager, I'm doing, taking care of this. And it, and it just didn't work out. We did have a couple of guys that actually, um, that actually, uh, graduated from Breaking the Chains and moved on, or we had to ask them to leave because they were taking a dangerous path. The other guys were, because they had some control.
True.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, no, we did, we did try that, and we do, if somebody comes along and they can do some work, we do. Yeah, we will pay them.
Thank you.
Anything for, um, I don't mean for out.
So we don't believe in doubling them up, so some people double up in rooms. So they put maybe two in a room. So if you have a four bedroom house, they'll have eight men in there, we don't do that. So we do, we build one, um, at twenty-five, fifteen, or six street. It has five units, um, five rooms, with four, with two bathrooms, or one and a half bath. And the one on Schoolville Street has four bedrooms.
So and each guy pays on a fifty dollars a week?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Do you have any other information you'd like to share?
No, I, um, no, I don't, I just.
Well, thank you much, then.
Thank you, I hadn't, this was easy, I was, I was like, oh my goodness, I'm going to here. I was by myself, my, um, my, my sister is sick and my brother's not here, so. And I didn't mind coming by myself, so.
You were all prepared.
Yes, I've got comfort, yes. But thank you all so much for the time, and I appreciate it, and it was good seeing everybody once again.
You too, thank you.
Um, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, thanks for your patience. Uh, we're getting closer to being on schedule, but, you know, I don't know whether I be at approximately fifteen minutes for your presentations, you know. Uh, also, this, this meeting is being livestreamed, the general, uh, the county just acquired, and it's on the gaming budget rewards website, if you want to watch your presentation. Uh, but I, I, I'm, I'm, so the time for twelve minutes, um, if that goes off, we need to wrap things up for the other applicants to come in.
Well, Dave.
Yes, ma'am.
They are both applicants. They, um, it's TLC work-based training and then TLC construction, same, same individuals.
Well, I didn't read the pass this last, okay.
So they're here.
So you get the whole app hour?
Yeah, you, you have the whole half hour for your projects.
Or, you know. So in that case, we'll just, uh, do the time for twenty-five minutes. So, because that goes off, then we can start wrapping things up, how about that?
That's fine.
All right.
Any some questions?
Please identify yourselves up for the public record if you have time.
I'm Tore Castile, uh, CEO, President of TLC Construction and TLC Work-Based Training. TLC Work-Based Training is a program on CQ nonprofit. And then TLC Construction is our still-profit construction company.
My name is Karen, we did a consultant working with TLC. Three, part of the, the.
Okay, uh, I was applying for the, uh, the, uh, gaming grant with the nonprofit TLC Work-Based Training. TLC Work-Based Training is, as I said, is our nonprofit, um, training program. We have certified apprenticeship from the labor industry of the RSL. Uh, do, uh, four housing tax credit projects in the city of Harrisburg. We just finished a fifty unit four housing tax credit in Allison Hill. About two months ago, uh, we done another one, um, two thousand and eighteen, we did a veteran housing tax credit, um, in Harrisburg, Uptown, where we purchased the, and the health center there, we, uh, supported services, um, for nonprofits and for private businesses. Uh, we started the nonprofit back in about two thousand and ten. But, um, our nonprofit, uh, we don't just do training, uh, um, but we do supportive services in the community. So what happened, we purchased the, uh, Allison Hill Community Center three years ago. Uh, it was sitting, uh, doing it for about five, six years. It was empty, another nonprofit, uh, lost the, uh, the building, they didn't found it nine ninety, so the city's vacant and blighted. So our help was already in the process of doing a tax credit deal in the area across the street. So, uh, I ended up purchasing the, the Allison Hill Community Center, and I started fixing it up and was trying to bring it back to where it used to be in our community. Because, uh, when I, when it was built in nineteen eighty-nine, it was donated to, uh, Mr. Bartan. And, you know, uh, after a while, it just, it just sitting. So when we, I purchased it and I started fixing it up with my own money, uh, with the four profit construction, uh, company, because the four profit, we were, I was making money, we did a lot of projects coming around Central Pennsylvania period. Uh, and instead, we, uh, the nonprofit is, uh, the owner of a lot of our assets, which we done, like I said, a twenty-year veteran home in Harrisburg, uh, we bought the Allison Hill Center building up for, uh, Fulton Street, uh, years ago. And, and I said, we want to support services, but when we went out to Allison Hill, uh, we developed a fifty, or forty, probably didn't miss at already, uh, November second, so, uh, we just finished that, but we, we, uh, we really, uh, uh, we didn't build a new community center. We just wanted to refurbish what we had, uh, because it was a nice size community center. Community center, we, we, uh, we were going to build what we, we had that size. Uh, so I wanted to bring that back, and, uh, it was actually a larger, uh, building. But my, my plan is to keep building around Allison Hill, because I'm going, actually, I'm working on phase two application because our, uh, the fifth unit was successful, we finished the fifth unit in eleven months. Uh, so we're getting on phase two, uh, PHFA tax credit, and we plan on doing some more development in Allison Hill, Wall machine area. And the community center is a key part of, of what we need for the supportive services in the area. And, but the thing was, it never had an HVAC system. It had an HVAC system in the office area, but the gym area, it never did. So, uh, I'm applying for these funds because we need the HVAC system. And, you know, a lot of the money that I, like I said, that we're going into the community center, I was paying out of pocket. But I'm not a big contractor, but I make, I'm doing all right, but I, I do what I can. But it's a lot of people that depends on that community center. Because not only, uh, uh, we have kids, between thirty and forty kids, playing in the community center every day after school, uh, for their after-school program, but we also feed the community every, every other Saturday twice a month. And we go after other funded, uh, we went after, uh, PCC fund, we had one of the gun violence grant years ago. So we, we modeled the kitchen, we put a stated art industrial kitchen, we conserved, and we had culinary arts program. We had a, uh, urban garden, uh, uh, we also. We had a, uh, urban garden, uh, uh, we also have, or, as I said, training for, uh, culinary programs, or we, like I said, which was the culinary program, the kids that can learn how to cook and eat healthy. We, uh, you know, feed the community with, you know, with, with the, uh, the money and food that we purchase. So, the other thing is, in the summer months, the spring summer months, when it's super hot, nobody goes to be there because it's hot and no air in the building. So, uh, the, the system we won't got a, uh, quote, or it was two million, a hundred and twenty-five, depends on who, who's supplying the little brand, you get, it can always be two hundred and five. So, that's why I applied for a higher amount, and I was trying to, um, use both entities, trying to bridge to get to the one twenty-five, because, uh, when we did the tax credit project, the funds left, we would, there, there was only enough really for supportive services to the programs that we run in the building. We didn't have enough for the HVAC systems. So, what the thing is, like I said, that's the original system that's been in the building since eighty-nine. Still works, but, well, the heat part, we never had AC. The AC in the offices don't work, so it's strangely cold. So, what we do is we plug heaters in, but we plug too many in at the trips. So, I mean, the thing is, uh, we definitely need, uh, other assistance in the building. Uh, but we have a lot of other nonprofits, not just TLC Work-Based Training or TLC Construction. We utilize the whole community to build, to go with me. Using for is, uh, other entities who, uh, they are a nonprofit who works with you, and other nonprofits, they share spaces. So, a whole bunch of different nonprofits, they be using that space for programs for the kids and adults. Um, but we also use it for, like, people have B passes over there, uh, kids, uh, birthday parties, all types of stuff. We, uh, you know, let the community utilize. It's not a, it's not a for-profit way for us. It's really nothing, really like a, uh, donation space for my nonprofit. My for-profit just to work. But my program, uh, uh, TLC Construction, we train exit veterans, hard to place in the building, veterans in construction, we're certified to construct. We've done many projects in, uh, Central PA, as I said. We've done the forum, we just did the fifth unit, we did the, um, Hamilton Health Center, new building, seven, since you have been. Penn State Harrisburg, U E B building. I was the contractor, did all the framing and driving. Done a lot of projects in this, in this community. But like I said, that, that, the community center was really the my give back to my community. I'm born and raised in Harrisburg. And, you know, um, I've been in situations, uh, where I've, um, been in trouble in my life back in my early years. And once I got myself together, I started my for-profit construction, then I started the nonprofit. So, I started training, uh, individuals in the field of construction. And, uh, you know, basically give back to, to do it that way. But I also, uh, will continue the, the, the pieces that I had when I was coming up was the community center, where I, I would, you know, have people that were, that cared about the kids in the community, and I cared about the kids in the community. That's what I'm trying to put back together. But a lot of times, we do it when we don't have a, a state replacement down the book. So, uh, uh, so I'm, I'm basically doing the presentation for both entities, thus I was speaking.
All right. So, I have a question about that. Can you explain the role that each, that any play in the project? Since there's two applications that seem to be for the same project, what role will the nonprofit play in? What role?
Well, the nonprofit actually owns the community center. Uh, so, uh, I really had to apply for it with the nonprofit, because with the nonprofit, we, for-profits, uh, we're working the training, but the for-profits just leveraging each other to help with the construction in the, uh, project name of who we hire to do the work. We already have, uh, that's what a constructor coming from up here, constructing HVACs, we can't. To do work, well, we would do some of the trainees that we, we, uh, trained in construction to do some of this miscellaneous work, some of the demolition, things like that. So, you know, pay more than what we should to do the demolition of working, you know, getting the install, or what it is called. That's what the difference between the one twenty-five and the two hundred. And we, we did it really cheaply, for something else.
So, your skill set, I guess it's carpeting or what?
Yeah, I'm a general contractor. Uh, uh, commercially, I do, uh, uh, general contract, but I do stuff, depends on what side of the project. But, uh, I do general contract myself, not be a general beside the project.
Do you do HVAC or do wood?
Uh, wood, but I can, but anyway, I do demo. I do demo. I can do the demo, but I, my main thing is I can put through any type of project. Put block here and put, uh, some, some duct, I can install duct stuff like that. But my main thing is do demo, um, get rid of the whole system. Um, we save a lot of money by hiring a company to install, and they will try to bring you in.
So, I'm impressed that it was put in the email.
Yeah.
Can you look for the questions?
Um, so, yeah, I, I need the questions emailed to me when you have a chance. I did not receive those.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. Okay. Yeah, and whenever, tomorrow morning, you email it to me. That way I can, um, have them. Or, if this is completely out of standard and none of your book, so. I'll make sure this gets in their file tomorrow morning. Troy, do you want to look at that?
I'll, I'll follow.
Okay.
I also do that handout for, um, two of the documents that you have coming up.
Okay, so, good. So, this is question one of the TLC Work-Based Training. So, yes, please confirm whether it was for the, uh, Sugar Grant program, seventy-five thousand, we went to. Here's the TLC Work-Based Training, it's like over one twenty-five, and that's the new cost of installation. And the HVAC air conditioning system, because we, we partner with the city, but the city, it's not just even capable, even the city rents the space or asks to use the space, even if we have job fair, or they have other, uh, somebody running for your collection or whatever, they all use the center. Maybe nobody really helps out over there with none of the things that they, they, uh, using the building for, really kind of left on that. Now, um, as I said, I do apply for other grants and stuff for the nonprofit. Like I said, we just finished the fifth unit. We had sixteen million. We do a fifth unit project, which was across the street. But the supportive service is with, uh, the, the PHFA, should be building with the help, uh, support at the community center. It wasn't support from the construction alone. But, um, so I did go after PCC before, I told you. And, um, uh, we had a little two hundred thousand, we, we did the kitchen, but I did the bathrooms and all of the, uh, uh, closets and the, and the gym area, just off of my own, uh, TLC construction. So, if now we're on the pocket, so, um, kind of do that, lot of scanning thing over there. And I do also do repairs and whatever's needed around the building. And then question two, the applicant did not provide an explanation as to such increased funding in the number of one twenty-five equipped, who are warranted, who are recommended now, for non-municipal entity applicants in seven-five, three percent. And that's what I'm just saying, most of the time, um, they call it some installation, or HVAC air conditioning system giving two, or twenty-five, or two hundred. And I said, we wouldn't do, uh, over, you know, where they keep the cost, and that's why I said we can move down to one twenty-five, because we had some essence from the floor, and Johnson, for the worst, I put it to us for two million down. So, I'm a small company, and then there's definitely a lot of, you know, our trainees to do the demo, but the miscellaneous stuff to accept costs. And then, question three, how would a Darwin County local share grant show to you is awarded to the project, the funding award? The funding is awarded will be used for the purchase and installation of HVAC system on the local building. And question four, what is the status of private funding to be contributed to the project? So, there's three levels of business owned by me, will be leveraged condition funding. So, mainly the nonprofit goes after grants, the for-profit, when we do it, since the game is open to, to a rapid nonprofit, so that's why I kind of like try and leverage on both, trying to meet the one twenty-five and get the over thing there. Has the project commenced? The project hasn't not commenced. What is the estimated date of completion? Uh, I put six to twelve months upon award, because a lot of times it's a supply, uh, chain issue, because the HVAC system is not commercial ones, it's, it, it takes time, and, and sometimes parts, it, it takes a long time. And it might be four to six months lead time, then you don't know when the contract is developed. If, uh, when the money is sent to, then I got basic study whenever he's available, but we also got a board of directors, assuming those guys, so we don't know how long it's been, but we, we, we're straight, we have no risk will happen. So, I was pushed to lead time, six, two, twelve months, but I think we really, we done three to six months. But upon the construction project we just finished, we had some, uh, supply chain issue. So, so I know it could be somewhere in that area. So, then it's the question number six, applicant does not state whether they have been in this control of the grant funds in the past five years, or whether it has been discussed or any litigation related to private treatment. And then, no risks at all, that, I mean, I just had sixteen, seventeen, you know, a, a recent couple of months, or I've done four and a half, we've put out, we need another tax credit, probably, but, um, probably two million, we'll be, that's regular for me. So, I'm nervous.
What would be if you had any to leave, and there's a scale from your company as well?
No, that's, that's never happened. Are there letters of support to the project? The mayor of City Harrisburg supports this, uh, project, and it is going to be, uh, 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 the city, we do a lot of stuff in the city for just to, for not just for, uh, uh, nonprofits, for the city as a whole, for the community center, which is what it is, the community, so it's not doing for, for any, for any entities, or a bunch of entities, relaxing, my nonprofit really been doing too much, but just to support, so it's a whole bunch of my profit. So, we do a lot of collaborative work, and we just have, uh, scheduled times with who's doing what, maybe, and this, or this. Um, just we correlate new schedules every minute, everybody having a bit of slack of time. But the most nonprofit is the community helping out the building, but we actually have a building, so we try to put it in time, whichever, uh, who's going to do it. Okay, uh, that was it. The, the question you have for the nonprofit, so the for-profits, over the same, it's the same question. So, when you said the applicant goes in, who estimates the support, I'll give you, uh, parameters, because I'm about to answer again.
That's fine. It's the same quote, um, that's on that.
Yeah, yeah. So, you can go back and say, no, uh, do?
No, you don't have to.
It's the same question.
It's the same quote.
Yeah.
There's no additional funding for, that's been secured, or, 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 for this project?
Um, we're going to go after additional funds. I actually applied for an E P A grant, um, but, I mean, it's federal, I mean, I don't, we didn't hear something about that. We just, I don't, uh, so, uh, we, um, we got, we ain't, sorry. We ain't going to know for a little while whether you got that or not, but I do apply for the funding, because like I said, PCC, I go after that fund every year, the last thing we brought in was PCC. Uh, but we go after gun violence grants over here, and then, um,
I'm not familiar with the act.
Depends if any commission of crimes, like this is a bunch, so, actually, I've been in commission for seven years now. So, um, this is a nonprofit, but, um, you know, we, we, we went after funds very before, we still went after other funds, but it's not for the HVAC, it's for, they for, uh, gun violence, for, that we use, everything we use in community center.
It would be helpful, at least for me, that there sounds like there's other things you're doing at the community center that is investing funds and stuff, which would also show that you're leveraging more assets against what you're requesting there, right?
Yeah.
Because for, for us, it's helpful to see that there, that we're not beating the bulk of the money that's there, right? It's nice to see that you have other money that's in there that you've done, and would, would, would be very helpful if you could share some of that information.
Well, a lot of the other funds, like I said, the community center, I said, it's seven, eight, so the HVAC system is just one piece.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying.
That's what you're saying, if there are more improvements or upgrades that you're doing or have done.
Yeah, we've done the.
It's part of your grand, um, project that, you know, in addition to the HVAC that you're requesting, you can also have those all before.
Under phase one, I call it a new rule, that, okay, okay.
And we did that with dollars from, even if it was, um, your own equity, you know, over investment. That would show additional funds being leveraged for that project.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I, well, PCC gave us two hundred.
I move out of here. Put it in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be a lot easier, because I'm not going to be able to. Make the rest of, of your time an hour or so. No, no, that's why we have this sort of discussion, right? Where you come forward, because it's also not only for you to present some additional information for us, it's like, hey, when we're hearing this, let's try to bolster your application up a little bit by asking decent type of questions.
All right. And then, like, for a letter of support, I'm, I would assume that Luke would be happy to write a letter on your behalf, because that's where they need, or, you know, you, so they'd be happy to, you know, give a letter of support for your request that would improve the project.
Any other questions? I think it's admirable, as you, as you can do here, but I wish you the best of luck. Please, I say, uh. You're asking for a patient on that everything, wherever you're. Yeah. You move. Look, thank you much. There's nothing else? Best of luck to you.
Thank you.